Can we get roll call, please?
Uh, yes. Council President Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Corman. Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
What's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move to excuse the absent council members.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm here. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So it looks like we have the full council in attendance tonight. Okay, let's go ahead and get the meeting started. Uh, we've got a couple of proclamations, uh, tonight. The first one is National Safe Place Week.
Okay, proclamation. Uh, National Safe Place Week, whereas Safe Place is a program that quickly connects runaway and homeless youth ages 12 to 17 to services, either by reuniting them with family or providing emergency shelter. And whereas since the program inception in 1983, it has grown to include nearly 140 programs nationally, including in King County. More than 15 million youth have been educated through National Safe Place Network's outreach efforts, familiarizing themselves, them with the Safe Place sign, and providing information about how to seek help in order to stay safe. And whereas more than 359,000 youth have been helped at a Safe Place location or receive counseling as a result of Safe Place information received at school. Whereas Safe Place maintains a 24-hour hotline, 1-800-422-teen, where youth can directly connect with Safe Place staff, and within one hour, a Safe Place coordinator meets with the youth, assesses the situation, and works with the youth to place them at a shelter or reunite them with parents or guardians. And whereas Friends of Youth and Youth Care have worked in partnership since 2012 to provide Safe Place services for youth and crisis across King County, Metro Buses, local businesses, and nonprofit organizations are among the over 2,100 places in King County that serve as locations where youth can request assistance and where staff members are trained to respond to youth in need and immediately contact Safe Place. And whereas the success of Safe Place is based on public-private collaborations, and King County needs increased numbers of volunteers serving as mentors and positive influences on young people. And whereas increased awareness will encourage more communities to establish Safe Place locations where youth can readily access the help they need. And now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim March 15th to 21st, 2020 to be National Safe Place Week in the City of Renton. And I encourage all members of the community to join me in this special observation and witness whereof. I have hereunto set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed the 16th day of March 2020. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Perez.
This is Councilmember Van, and I-
Oh, Councilmember Van.
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, thank you, Jason. Up next is a second proclamation. This one is Irish American Heritage Month.
Okay, proclamation. Whereas during Irish American Heritage Month, we celebrate the countless achievements of Irish Americans and recognize the remarkable contributions they have made to our nation's character, culture, and prosperity. And whereas from America's earliest days, Irish Americans have proven themselves to be confident, fierce, tough, and faithful. And whereas we recognize their efforts to help build a stronger, prouder America, and we acknowledge the steadfast relationship we have with the Emerald Isle. And whereas Irish Americans have played a critical role in our nation's history and have made significant contributions to our military, government, and economy. And whereas we admire the devotion, faith, and resilience of the more than 31 million Irish Americans who help our country flourish. And whereas this month, as we celebrate the vibrant heritage and culture of Irish Americans and partake in St. Patrick's Day festivities on March 17, we pay tribute to the tenacious Irish spirit. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim March 2020 to be Irish American Heritage Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all members of the community to join me in this special observation and witness whereof. I have hereunto set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed the 16th day of March 2020. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
Yes, I, uh, move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the proclamation is adopted. Next up, we have a-
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may add, um, in regarding to the Irish American Heritage Month, I, um, want to thank you for the proclamation in that I also want to inform the council as yourself and our city, um, to, um, check out the Irish American display box that's, uh, on the seventh floor that was, uh, helped, uh, design and put in place. Uh, all the items were, um, given by Mr. Patrick Buckley, and there's a display on the seventh floor. So thank you, and, um, happy soon-to-be St. Patty's Day.
Thank you. Uh, and yes, I actually just walked by it, and the Guinness looked, uh, looked intriguing, so. All right, next up, we have, we have a public hearing, uh, Washdott acquisition for I-405 and Southport interchange, and, uh, I believe we have a presentation from Amanda Asgren.
Yes, oh, have to be closer.
Yes, try to, yeah.
Sorry, technical difficulties. All right. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President and Councilmembers. My name is Amanda Asgren in the Community and Economic Development Division.
Can, can everybody hear Amanda?
I can hear her.
Yes, can I?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So tonight, as you mentioned, we are doing a public hearing for the Washdott acquisition, um, at the 405 and Southport interchange. Uh, this, the, um, the acquisition areas are located just south of Southport and east of Hauser, um, near the landing and the Coulon Park area for a bigger picture. Um, they are part of the overall 405 widening project, which most of the council members have been briefed on. Um, this has been a project that Washdott has come to the city numerous times. We've reviewed. They are currently under contract for design-build, and they are working on getting all of the acquisitions for the, this area as well. Um, this focus for this request is just on the Southport interchange. Um, the request came in December of 2018. We have been working with, um, the attorneys and Washdott back and forth to make sure that the documents are good for the four acquisitions that they are requesting. The first acquisition is a temporary construction easement, which is shown in blue on the map. Um, this is in the cul-de-sac area on Hauser Way. It's just off the pavement area. There is a manhole in that area that we plan to protect. Um, it is 326 square feet. That's pretty small. Uh, the other property, the other acquisition is, uh, the other temporary construction easement is a 15-foot strip lying on, on the east side of Hauser, all the way along that portion of the property that they're planning to take, which is in red. Um, that area will be used for, during the construction, and will return back to the city after the fact. It's just temporary construction. There is a permanent access easement, which is located in yellow, which is more near the, on the north side of the parcel, which is, um, Lake, near Lake Washington Boulevard. This is an unapproved area that the city owns. It'll be used for access, um, to some of their utilities. There is a gate in that area, so it's in front of the gate. It is a permanent easement that will be in perpetuity. Um, it's 729 square feet. And the big one is, it's shown in red, which is the area that we would be, are selling to Washdott. Uh, it's 20,978 square feet. Um, this is a pretty big area, but it's, uh, right there, um, kind of a hillside area as well. So the total compensation for all four, for the two temporary construction easements, the access easement and the deed, is $18,100. Uh, the temporary construction easements, as I said, are temporary and will end December 31st, 2024. Staff recommendation is that the mayor and city clerk execute the Washdott documents for the four acquisitions, and then authorize accepting the compensation from Washdott. So if council approves, um, later down the road, uh, Washdott, the documentation would be signed and returned to Washdott, and then accept compensation from Washdott. That's it.
That's the end for her presenting.
That's the end of my presentation.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Uh, what's the wish of the council at this time?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Uh-
Councilmember McGurven. Thank you. Um, I'm assuming there was no correspondence to read in, but my motion will take care of that if, if there was.
There was no correspondence.
No correspondence, okay. Uh, I would like to move, uh, that we continue the public hearing, uh, until 3:00 PM on Friday, March 20th, uh, 2020, uh, for written comment only, um, after which the public hearing would be closed.
I second.
Was that Mr. Corman that seconded?
Yeah, that was, uh, Mr. Corman first, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved by the council that the public hearing remain open till 3:00 PM on next Friday for written comment only. Um, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next up, we have administrative report.
Good morning, or good evening, Mr. Mayor. Hello, council members. Nice to hear, uh, hear your voices. Um, I have four items for you this evening. Um, first is a decision that was made today, and a, uh, emergen, a notice was sent, uh, out to the council, and we are informing the community this evening, but effective tomorrow, March 17, and until further notice, all city facilities, uh, including City Hall, will be closed to the public for all city services except attendance at, um, at court hearings. Under Court Order 2020-02, only in custody jail hearings are currently being held. Instructions will be posted at City Hall explaining how to access the in custody court hearings. The city continues to provide many services through alternative means, including telephone and online services. Um, the next report, a little bit, uh, will go over a little bit what's been occurring over the last couple of weeks. We intend to have a full briefing for the council at the next committee of the whole meeting, uh, next week. Um, but, uh, just to go through a little bit of what's occurring, on March 5, a proclamation of local emergency was issued for the City of Renton due to the public health impact of COVID-19. During these uncertain times such as these, the city may require supplemental assistance if the severity of the event goes beyond all capabilities and local resources. This emergency declaration enables the city to call in those additional resources. Also, the city's operations center is activated virtually every day between 8:00 and 5:00 PM. To limit the spread of COVID-19, the King County Executive and Health Officer issued a new local health order that directed public health action effective today, Monday, March 16. All events with more than 50 people are prohibited until further notice. All events with fewer than 50 people are discouraged and prohibited unless organizers observe COVID-19 prevention measures. All bars, dance clubs, fitness and health clubs, movie theaters, nightclubs, and other social and recreational establishments will be closed until at least March 31st. All restaurants and food service establishments cannot provide dining room service, but may remain open for drive-through and takeout and delivery. All other retail, including banks, grocery stores, hardware stores, and pharmacies should and may remain open provided they observe COVID-19 prevention measures. Uh, the administration has also established a COVID-19 page on our website, and are working diligently to share that information, um, from public health officials via our social media, Twitter, Facebook, and Nextdoor accounts. We've been working closely with members of the Inclusion Task Force as well to keep them informed of the situation, be available to them and their communities during these times. The containment of COVID-19 is an ever-evolving situation with all events happening in real time. Because of this, your best source for the most up-to-date information is Public Health Seattle and King County and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. As you can tell, this has been a very fast-moving public health emergency, and so information we provide today sometimes goes out of date, uh, three days later, or two days later, based on the latest information. So, um, you know, bear with us and stay, uh, connected on those public, uh, social media platforms so you can get the most up-to-date information. Um, one of the things that we did have planned was a fairly, uh, robust, uh, in-person census program. Uh, the census dropped on March 12. Uh, unfortunately, with the, um, public health emergency, uh, we've had to, uh, redo some of our plans. Um, and so, uh, 2020 federal census will begin showing up in mailboxes this week. A completed form ensures everyone in the household is counted, which is important as the census determines allocation of federal funding to support that housing, education, transportation, healthcare, and other programs and infrastructure in Renton. Please take that census. The city, um, will also be, uh, looking at a variety of social media platforms and, uh, advertisements that will be directed, uh, to, um, to the community. And lastly, um, the, uh, the city received an inquiry, uh, from a resident who is facing a court ordered eviction. And while the city cannot, uh, prevent, uh, court ordered eviction, the city did reach out to her and provide her with some nonprofit resources to contact and follow through on to assist her in this, uh, time of need. Um, the city also reached out to the governor's office to see if they were considering a statewide, uh, eviction ban during this time of emergency. Um, it, and we were informed it's one of many options they have, uh, under consideration. I know there was, uh, question by, um, one of our council members regarding, uh, the city of Seattle mayor's, uh, emergency proclamation on this. Um, and, uh, if that's additional research that's desired, our city attorney has done some preliminary research, uh, and we could provide an answer at that update next week, Monday. Uh, with that, I close my administrative report. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Hey, thank you very much. Um, so next up would normally be audience comment. Um, the City of Renton issued a civil emergency proclamation due to the coronavirus on March 5, 2020. At the recommendation of the Seattle and King County Public Health Department, no in-person comments will be accepted. All residents are encouraged to submit written comments via email to cityclerk@rentonlaw.gov, or by dropping off handwritten comments to Renton City Hall, um, with the city clerk's office. Um, there actually, City Hall is closed, but there'll be a window open at the police department, and you'll be able to drop them off there. Okay, next up is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Perez.
I move that the council concur with the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So next up, we have unfinished business. Council President Perez.
Nonfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has some key reports.
I'm sorry, Mr. Prince, I don't actually have the report.
Nope, you, you, I'm sorry, uh, nope, they're resolutions, I'm sorry. No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I believe you were going to make motions to approve the items in committee, Mr. Prince.
Um, we didn't have committee. But, uh, with regards to the inter-agency, um, agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce for engraft second substitute House Bill 1923, grant to adopt a housing action plan, I move the resolution entering into the agreement for the grant and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted. Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, um, I move the vouchers, uh, be approved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the vouchers be approved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution passed.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Next up is council member, is that all, Councilmember Prince?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember McGurven.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we would have been, uh, moving, um, the issue for the Washdott acquisition for, but obviously, as I, as we, we earlier moved to continue the public hearing, uh, we're gonna hold off any action that I probably should have said earlier. Uh, the intent withholding that, uh, which, thank you for, for, um, adopting that motion, uh, was to, uh, allow additional times when these unusual circumstances in case there was any comment. Um, so we will address this issue next week. That's all, Mr. Prince.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the today's utility committee meeting was canceled. However, because the issue is timely, with regard to the agreement with King County Flood Control Zone District for the Lower Cedar River Flood Risk Reduction Feasibility Study, I move to execute the grant agreement in the amount of $499,658.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, um, concur with the agreement, uh, with the King County Flood District. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benedetti.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have legislation. Looks like we have two resolutions tonight.
Okay, the first resolution is proclaiming an emergency. Uh, this is, uh, related to the COVID-19 coronavirus.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Council President Perez.
I move the resolution be adopted as, as read.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the proclamation, resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, resolution passed.
Okay, the final resolution is regarding the inter-local agreement for the housing grant. I believe we did make a motion to pass, pass it, but I'm gonna go ahead and read this anyway and, and reapprove it, so, uh, if you will, please. Uh, resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an inter-local agreement relating to an E2SHB 1923 grant with Washington State Department of Commerce for 2019 through 2021.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move the, uh, resolution be adopted as read.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have new business. Council President Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, there are, I have two items that I want to announce. First of all, uh, on March 23rd at 6:00 PM, this is Monday, Monday, March 23rd, we will have a committee of the hall, uh, through teleconference, and we have one issue, which is emerging issue, emergency COVID-19 briefing update and next steps. And I will also add, eh, emerging issues in committee of the hall. And then at 7:00 PM on March 23rd, also Monday, we will have the city council meeting, also through teleconference. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, I will also, we like to, obviously, we are, uh, right now in, in a nonprecedent in time, so, due to this civic emergency, uh, situation, uh, the future committees, our future meeting, meetings that we will be having, I am, would like to move all of them to be until further now, notice conducted, uh, via teleconference.
I, I second that motion. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that, uh, further committee meetings will be held through teleconference. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to remind, eh, the public that they, it's very important that they know that they can contact us at any time, and their public comments are very welcome. And you already provide the emails, but the email, um, for the city clerk, as well as all the council members, are in our website. And, uh, and also, all our meetings are gonna be, people are gonna be able to see them on Channel 21 or through our website or YouTube. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for your leadership in this crazy time, so. Next up, Councilmember Corman.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just one announcement tonight, and that's that, um, we are canceling the Planning and Development Committee meeting, uh, that would have been held on March 23rd, and that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee meeting that was being held on March 23rd is also canceled.
Thank you. Councilmember McGurven.
Uh, no new business announced, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, I know that, uh, administrative report, um, had mentioned regarding, uh, some of the concern that I brought up, but, uh, again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, in light of the COVID-19 and, uh, for the safety and health of our Renton community, and especially our 42.8% renters, um, and, uh, our communities of darker color and vulnerable population, I move to refer the matter of a moratorium on eviction at the next committee of the whole meeting. Um-
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we, uh, move the issue of a moratorium, uh, for rent to the next committee of the whole meeting. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppo, opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
Uh, did, did she, was it rent or evictions that were-
Um, it's a moratorium on eviction.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And, and, Mr. Mayor, additionally, due to the COVID-19 impact and the, the nature, how it's just very fast-paced at this point, I know that our small mom and pop shops are, um, certainly suffering, and there are, um, resources out there at different levels. Um, however, I do, as, as a council member representing the people, I, uh, motion to refer the topic of a, uh, small stabilize, small business stabilization fund, or any type of support that we can provide for our small local business here. Um, I motion to refer this topic to the next finance committee, meeting.
Second.
Is that Mr. McGurven?
I think that was. Was that Mr. McGurven?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the issue of, um, providing assistance to small businesses be moved to the next, uh, scheduled Finance Committee. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Is that everything? Councilmember Van.
Uh, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Benedetti.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, uh, I believe that's the end of our, our meeting here. I just wanna say, uh, thank you all for, um, your willingness to have this teleconference meeting. I know it's been- I know it's been extremely cumbersome to get set up. Um, but I think now that we're, um, underway, here at the city, we're at a point where we have over two hundred and thirty employees out telecommuting. Um, we've been very effective at actually getting that stood up where a lot of the other cities are really struggling with it. So, uh, it's been a huge win for us to try and maintain the continuity of services for our residents as we work through this issue. Um, so one thing I do wanna bring up is- Councilmember Perez?
I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you, please finish.
No, go ahead. Okay, so last thing I would like to say, um, and it was, it was brought up in administrative, uh, report briefly. We, I've asked all the administrators to actually provide, um, a daily briefing, uh, to our communication department, and we will be ha, posting that on our Facebook page and our city website for, um, um, translation into a number of different languages. We will also be sending it out on our newsletter. And this is something we're gonna do daily because, uh, information is changing very rapidly. If we get new information, we wanna be able to get it out to the public and the residents as swiftly as possible. Um, so with that, uh, I would like to, um, miss, find out the wish of the, the council?
Mr. Ma, Mr. Mayor?
Council, Council President Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to appreciate, eh, all the staff and as well as you for, um, how, what I even said, uh, very, very, uh, tough and professional job that, uh, everybody has done to keep providing services and, and more than anything to keep our community safe. Um, uh, furthermore, I would like to share that, um, just right now, we re, we did receive an email from, from King County Councilmember Claudia Baducci providing financial information from, uh, the Washington State Department of Financial Institutions addressing some of the concerns that council or member bank has, uh, which is, uh, they're providing support for people that are having trouble paying rent or mortgage, as well as, um, the small business association, uh, providing assistance, uh, for those small businesses that are struggling. So, I will be happy to forward this information as well, and, um, and thank you very much for everything, uh, that, um, the leadership on, on the city are doing, uh, in this again unprecedented time.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Perez. I, I, we all, I received it as well, thank you.
Okay, what's the wish of the council at this time? Move, we adjourn?
I'll second yours.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.